I'm here to market schedule.
Meeting called to order. Today is Monday, March twenty fourth. It is now six oh one P M. Fiscal twenty sixth budget workshop. Town council changes eleven seventy Main Street, Westmoreland Park.
We'll call Councilman Messier?
Chair.
Councilman Lachardi?
Here.
Councilman Jensen?
Here.
Council vice president Williamson?
Here.
Councilwoman Kelsey.
Here.
Form is declared. Town manager overview of the budget process.
Good evening. Of the department heads that weren't here last one day, anyone listening online or for posterity of the recording. This is our second public workshop. Where the town council and the public start the process of reviewing and vetting the proposed FY twenty twenty six budget. As presented by the respective department heads and the town manager. During the first two Tuesdays in April, we will hold public hearings. We had a council will make adjustments. To this proposal after considering public comments and welcome input. Our department heads continue to be considerate of the town's fiscal constraints and the fluctuating status of the economy while drafting requests. That will support the continuation of the services expected by our community. And provide for the upgrading of the infrastructure necessary to offer those services safely and more efficiently. I'd like to acknowledge the hard work of our finance director, Kristen Benoit, in producing this proposal and keeping us on a reasonable and conservative path. Our recent budget processes continue to be affected by the uncertainty of a finalized state budget. And federal funding sources, the national economy, inflation fluctuations, and rising supply cost. How these all affect our FY twenty twenty six revenue and expenditure planning is a work in progress. Some key budget points for fiscal twenty six proposal. The total budget increase is slightly more than five point nine million. That is inclusive of slightly more than one point seven million in municipal expenses. Slightly more than three point one million for school state aid pass through appropriation. And a request to increase the school department appropriation by slightly more than nine hundred ninety one thousand. The levy increase is at four percent or under the revision that's out just under four. Or approximately two point seven million. The approximate tax rate when I wrote this was at two point four or five. I believe now it is still at two three eight. Um, this may fluctuate slightly as just described as tangible annual returns coming back in. Funds that were reserved for anticipated collective bargaining salary adjustments for unionized staff and salary adjustments for non-union personnel in the FY twenty five budget. Still need to be proportionally dispersed in April. Um, as by described by charter that we're allowed to do it in the fourth quarter. The salary and related accounts in this FY twenty twenty six proposal will appear disproportionate until then. Capital expenditure requests totaling slightly more than one point two million dollars by the department heads have been eliminated in my proposal with the hope of restoring several key needs. If the funds become available or federal, state, and private grant and aid gets awarded. ARPA funds are no longer available. We have fully transitioned into the employee retirement system of Rhode Island. Rates provided by E R S R I have been applied to all pensionable salary types within their respective departments. Legacy plan employer rates have increased for fiscal year twenty six. A five point two percent increase in our healthcare working rates has been applied. The transition to the round into local trust for healthcare management remains successful. A seven point five percent increase was applied to our property and liability insurance premiums from the FY twenty five rates. Increase in to workers comp is due to a slight increase in our experience modification. For FY twenty six, work-related injury expenses included in this line as well. The tax collection rate in this proposal is ninety seven point zero percent. And there is no planned use of fund balance in this proposed FY twenty twenty six budget. Again, we look forward to collaborating with you to craft a finalized product that will be in the best interest of our hardworking and deserving community. Any questions for mom? With that being said, first on the list, personnel.
Good evening. Personnel department is department one myself. Uh, so the first half is uh my wages and benefits. Uh, we get down to the line items, supplies, uh, ninety dollars. A lot of that is postage. Uh, we just send a lot of things to retirees, healthcare notices and things like that. Um, so that's the postage being sixty nine cents a letter now. Um, the advertising budget is primarily for recruitment endeavors. Um, the last year we used most of that towards um police recruitment. Um, working with Chief Levine. This year we're looking into doing like a recruitment video, um, which a lot of departments have been doing. Um, so money will be utilized for things like that. Um, the medical uh testing, those are our pre-employment physicals and psychological testing that we do for police and fire. Um, it also includes our random drug testing program required to do by law for all of our C D L drivers. Uh, the retiree medical collection was something new a couple of years ago when we switched to the state pension system. We were no longer able to take the um. Amount that the retirees pay the town for healthcare out of their pension checks. So we had to find a third-party collection company to do that for us. Um, that seems to be going pretty well. Um, more and more people are falling off of that. So I think, you know, eventually that would go away. Um, as more people are electing the H S A option for healthcare and retirement. Um, which we don't collect on. It's just a deductible that they are paying themselves. So hopefully over time that'll go down a little bit. Um, right now it's kind of just been evening out with their yearly um increase from a company, but. Um, employee engagement is a small amount that we use towards some things such as the holiday breakfast we usually do for employees. Um, we also last year had our first municipal Olympics, which was a uh, a day of activities for employees to try to get people involved. Um, we use the usual that we use it for like small gift cards here and there to incentivize people to participate. Different things that we do, uh, the door decorating contests and things like that. Uh, the last thing really is the employee assistance program, and that's a resource for all employees and their families. Um, we also can use it as a resource for management where we can refer employees. Um, if you think there's a particular issue, um, they will work with us on things like last chance agreements and uh different things like that. They also offer a few online and live webinars on health and wellness topics, mental health, things like that. Um, that should be going down a little bit. The trust actually has entered a agreement with. The coastline E A P, which is the company we use. So we're gonna be getting like a refund. So I'm waiting to find out for sure what that amount will. Definitely be, but it's gonna be a small discount on because of something the trust has worked out with coastline. And the last thing is just lease payments and then which is my share of a copy machine that I use.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Senior son.
So I I did approach uh town manager and ask that our budget be increased by forty five thousand dollars. Uh, we've had a few uh cuts in on grants that we receive. And that is personally is a little bit of a situation. I made adjustments to our payroll. I cut a few classes. To try to save us about sixty thousand dollars a year. It's tough because I'm I'm a full-time and my uh manager is a full-time person. Everybody else is part-time. So people that were working twenty-five hours, I cut them to twenty. Um, I eliminated a bus driver because he used to do like shopping trips for the manor, uh, Clyde Towers. So those those are the cuts I made. Uh, I did cut two classes. With those instructors, um, were paid considerably more than the other instructors. And their participation was not there. So I had to cut something. So I decided to cut two classes. Um, I am applying to the Rhode Island Foundation. For a grant, a community grant that they are a new round of grants that has come out. Um, I did just receive a a notice that I've uh made it through the first round. And now I'm gonna be uh making it through the second round.
Any questions for me?
Yeah, where would that forty-five thousand dollars go? Is it earmarked for something?
Uh, no, go into our general fund, help with payroll, uh, help with maintaining the building. Which um is, that's another issue that we have is our HVAC system. We spent over like twelve thousand dollars. Last January to this January, just trying to keep the air conditioning running. Always something breaking down. So uh, that's that's an increase that we have with uh our HVAC maintenance. But I would just go into our general fund.
Okay.
Um, it wouldn't allow me to bring back another drive. So, so we hope to do.
That drive will that bring back the shopping events and whatever?
Yes, yes. I, and those are the employment things. You know, the medium point things are the exercise programs that we run. Uh, very well attended and and an array of of different types of classes. Uh, transportation is big. A lot of people in town, especially in the housing, so they don't have transportation. So they don't, we don't want them to have to depend on R I P the or the ride program. So we do provide transportation to and from the center. And twice a month, we do a shopping trip. One shopping trip is from the senior center after lunch and every two weeks it's different where we go. The second one is for the housings because not everybody comes wants to come to the senior center for lunch. So we understand that. So. We go to Clyde Towers and the manor.
Any other questions for men? Thank you, man.
Thank you.
Tax collected.
Good evening.
Hi, Rose.
Was there a hundred?
Yeah, it's budget time.
There's just a couple of things. Um. The higher class pay, we did go up two hundred dollars. It seems that every year we have always going over on that. And that's when I'm out or the deputy is out. They either get, the deputy will get my higher class pay or if Lori's out. One of the clerks will get her deputy pay. Um, supplies and expenses, we use that for, you know, everyday um supplies in the office mostly. That item is used for printing of our bills as well. Um, but we did go down to eight thousand. So we took a thousand off. Um, and then the other line item that is changed is software. It used to be under compute, well, computer services, but now it's all under software and that went up a thousand dollars versus. Last year it was seventy-four, seventy-five. This year it's eighty-four, eighty-seven. But that's, that's all I have. Everything else is contractual and basically stayed the same.
Any questions for Rose?
Oh, wait, one more thing. I'm sorry. I forgot to mention this. Uh, postage, we did, when this was printed. Um, the county payable clerk didn't put in the postage. So it says it's four hundred actual, but the actual as of February was two thousand six hundred and twenty-one dollars. Just so you know, that's. Because we do use postage for delinquent notices, tax offsets, and so on and so forth. That's all I have.
Any questions for Rose?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rose.
Fire an E M A. Go fire.
Good evening, everyone.
Chief.
So uh, five apartment uh remains committed to meeting the needs of our community um through our different programs. Um, and through grants, we've been able to start a uh creative paramedicine program, which is. Um, doing a tremendous job in our community. Uh, this year's budget represents about a ten percent increase from last year. Uh, few different reasons for that. One is an eight percent increase in um salaries through contractual. Um, negotiations. There represents a twenty-five percent cost of pension increase. About an eight percent increase in medical expenses and eight to nine percent in payroll taxes. Um, those kind of go along with what the um. Contractual obligations were. Uh, we have trimmed about as much as we can from the budget. We worked hard to get the budget to where it is. And if there's any questions, I'd be very happy to try to answer them.
Any questions for the chief? Looks like um.
I wanna.
Are we, yeah, I reached my point. So overtime, one point five five. We're at one point one. Are we looking at being under budget this year?
We're gonna do our best, but I, you know, we are, we are short um. Three positions right now. We have two people starting the academy. Um, actually, they're coming in tomorrow is their first day. That they'll be here for four days doing the paperwork and getting acclimated to our department and starting the municipal fire academy next Monday the thirty-first.
No reason, I know we talk about that every year. It seems like a line item that never seems to meet the the goal. We always overspend there, but. You know, thank you. You've increased it over last year anyways, so we have. Any other questions?
I I have one.
Yeah.
Um, the the numbers on department head salaries.
Yeah, so.
It's really the jumps to one eighty-six. Is that a?
So that that is adding the assistant chief. So it's a portion of the assistant chief's salary is in the uh department heads. And a portion of it is in E M A. And um, that that was designed that way.
Chief, we're wishing he was getting that.
I'm running now. Thank you, chief. By actually E M A now, so. Could be much change to that.
Yes, well, our spending is down from last year.
Yeah, so.
So, um, yes. And we're actually close on um getting the Tez Street funded, New Light and Goff Street. So. Um, that's all been pushed from FEMA down to REMA. So we're close on um getting awarded that seventy-five percent of our expenses. Uh, for that funding game.
And how much is that? Chief, just all part?
So uh, Petes Street was about two hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. Uh, Goff was about eighty-three thousand. And about thirty-five thousand on night, on that night, um, New Light Street.
That's what we applied for. We'll get seventy-five percent.
Five percent of those, yes.
What about Green Bush?
So Green Bush is is clearing right now. Uh, we have an application in uh for an exemption from D E M. That's the one of the last hurdles. It's as of right now, it's the last hurdle that I know of, but things seem to pop up occasionally.
Any other questions for the chief? Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Next department.
Good evening, council. Uh, before you was the proposed budget for Westmore Police Department for fiscal year twenty twenty-six, which I had prepared. It proposes the necessary funding to provide the highest level of services from the Westmore Police Department, which the residents and visitors of the town of Westmore have come to expect. This budget includes increases which satisfy contractual obligations and other nondiscretionary costs. It was compiled while being very mindful of the taxpayers of the town of Westmore without conservative fiscal planning. In the highlight sheet that I've provided, uh, each member of the council, uh, the overwhelming majority of our uh increases is tied directly to contractual obligations. And other fixed costs, uh, which have been provided to me, the figures themselves have been provided to me uh by the finance department and I've I've. You know, done my due diligence and checking to see if there was any discrepancies. Um, a few small items that uh we asked um for increases on was the shift differential pay. Uh, of ten thousand dollars due to increases in the collective bargaining agreement. Software, uh, three thousand five hundred dollars uh increase. Due to a specific software that we utilize, um, increase. And uh, I did have a capital request, uh, which was eliminated by the town manager, but we. Uh, I I believe we have other funding sources that we can utilize if uh if if we need to do that.
Any questions for the chief? Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Thank you. D P W.
Uh, I'm just the problem we're taught this past year. Got a lot of work done. We did a lot of projects. Completed a lot of uh different drainage jobs, fixed a lot of uh manholes. Um, and got a lot of work done. I think it shows around town how the guys worked and uh in town. Um, you can see that uh with the budget that we went down a few different places, but we had to go up in a few different places to to uh. Maintain the level of uh. Things that we get done. So, uh, any questions?
So that that winter budget, major needs winter is you're at one seventy-seven through March eleventh. That uh hopefully done?
Uh, good Lord willing. That's the toughest line item we have because obviously. You know, one year you may spend nothing, the next year and and it's unfortunately, we don't, it'd be easier for us if we got a foot of snow. As opposed to all these little storms with the ice. So unfortunately, that's that's one that you never gonna be able to.
With uh with like the winter needs, like if you don't use it, it just rolls back into your just. There's some, just go back to our general, what happens to?
As somebody overspent, that's probably where it came from. Remember when Dave Lombardi is, he saved five hundred thousand dollars. It went somewhere else. He's like, I want to use that for trucks, but.
I have a very hot time seeing white salt, especially in the winter. Makes me very nervous.
Any questions for Jeff?
Remind me about the rubbish contract from last last year a bit is that's.
Yeah, we uh put together a new R T, it was reviewed by the town manager and the finance director and it wants to get the uh. Okay, we made a tweak a few things and then we'll put it out.
Are there many companies out there?
To be honest with you, I don't know. I mean, uh, obviously mega is one of the bigger ones and you have uh. Was it Waste Aband or Waste? Waste, Waste, Waste has been over on in Grandston. I don't know of many other big ones out there.
So mega, mega merged with two others. Patriot, mega and some.
Yeah, another place on the waste.
Uh, about a year and a half, two years to start picking up on your path. Sorry about parking out, but yeah, one week it's mega, one week it's Patriot, one week it's uh come to find out they merged.
I mean, that could be human, who knows? But you don't see them around. A lot of them are on the opposite ends, you know?
Yeah.
Thank you, Jeff. Captain?
This one, this one.
Oh, Fox, yeah. Oh, yeah, Fox.
Sit down here.
The same thing with Park. The Park guys have worked really hard this year. Last year you see the uh. The results in the fields and uh the amount of uh rents we have. I I got a book this year for um. Uh renters and it's it's fallen right up until September. So we're full almost every day. Um. We've, when we tried to work with a few in two different places, but uh pretty much level funded with this one from last year. We didn't work too much. Uh, supplies and expenses, you're the kind of the same. Obviously, the general wages of the increase in that is through the contractual agreements. Um, this is one year that this is the year we start. Uh. Do you remember when we we did the fields? I had mentioned to you that every three to four years we had a, to a leveling across on the fields and laser level and. We do from a project, we're not spending that long. So we'll be doing that shortly.
Any questions for Jeff?
No, just ask the fields open, when they're gonna be open?
Well, I had planned to open on Wednesday.
Yeah.
Uh, but this isn't helping me at all, this weather. Um, they were able to get on uh McCarty and roll that this morning. So that is rolled. They had turned infield to lower, but. This isn't uh, this weather is not helping me very much. So still shooting for Wednesday depending on whether the wind blows tomorrow and it dries everything out where they can. You know, get out to practice. I know uh there's been some question, but the weather with the frost on the ground, it just didn't help us, you know, you know, deals a lot. But they are working hard to to get it done.
Thank you.
Any questions for Jeff? Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, Jeff.
Captain?
Sadly, there's nothing to speak of because I eliminated it with the hopes of returning some if possible.
Nigel Wish, won't skip that?
Yeah.
Town sergeant?
The sergeant's taken some, yeah.
Don't skip that. Board of canvassers?
Town clerk.
Oops, uh, town clerk? I was starting, I was stating that.
Um, actually, I can keep it real short and sweet because I have beyond our contractual obligations for salaries. I left everything the same. I think Mark did reduce our supplies budget by a thousand dollars, which I'm personally comfortable with. I didn't say anything that, so. Other than that?
Any questions for Sarah?
Okay, board of canvassers. Thank you, Sarah.
Well, welcome. Same story. So everything's level funded.
Any questions for that? Robby?
Also a change to our.
Any questions on that? Town council?
Only thing that changed on that was the taxes, just because when we adjusted last year for the raise, they didn't have to pay the hair taxes.
Any questions on ourselves? And last but not least, the leader.
You'll notice that judgment settlements, those have expired, so there's nothing budgeted for this year. The final payment was made during this fiscal year or. Pending judgments. Um, made downward adjustments in both labor specialist and outside services since we don't have any collective bargaining that's ongoing. Um, but just maintain uh money to deal with any ongoing needs or.
Should we, on judgment settlements, should we put a line in? That's a question for the council. Um, only because we do have one major one outstanding and we don't know what the outcome is going to be. Good, bad, or different. So.
I know the solicitor mentioned that to the finance director and I, and the brief conversation that Chris and I had was, you know, we have our general fund, a significant portion in interest-bearing accounts. I'm not sure if there's a positive fiscal benefit for putting it in a, in an operational budget.
We couldn't anyway, we're in fact, it's not gonna be worth it.
So, worst case scenario, that would be the way to go, it would be out of that fund.
That would be one of the reasons that, you know, it would be an unexpected expense.
So I'm good with that, any other questions on that?
Any other comment? I do just wanna make one comment, you know, I made a suggestion last time we met about a physician or physicians. And I thought I made it clear to begin and nothing personal, but rumor and speculation around town became personal. So just wanna point out, we're a council, we have to look at the budget. We have to look at physicians, we have to look at doing things differently. If anybody's aware, look at what the school department's doing tomorrow night to do things differently. We got thirty layoff notices going out tomorrow night. So, you know, we're talking, and I know it's a tough time, things aren't always gonna be great up here. Things, I mean, I gotta say, the last five years have been a pleasure up here actually financially. You know, but there was a little extra money here, a little extra money there, you know, things are getting tight again. We have to figure out ways to save money. Taxpayers are tapped out, there's no way for you to know what's about it. You know, you look and I, I'm looking at, reading the news and there's four states looking to eliminate property tax. And their average tax for households is three thousand to four thousand dollars. That's a lot more, a lot less than what it is here. So, you know, and I know they're populated, you can't compare populations, you can't compare economic development, I, I get all that. But when you sit there and you say, I'll just throw a flower out there, if they ever give it a property tax, I guarantee we lose our elderly community up here and they all go down there. Because it's perfect for them, why pay taxes up here of four, five, six, seven thousand dollars a year when you can put that in your pocket down there? You know, and then, you know, I, I had conversations with people in the school, people in the school department. If people can't afford to stay here, they leave here, you may lose children any, then what? You know, we, we have to look at it all different ways, but it's definitely a tough time, it's not easy. Please, don't take it personal, that's not gonna do it personal.
And it's certainly not unique to Westmore, I mean, every community is, is, and the state as a whole is going through the same process.
Before you adjourn, are we satisfied with upcoming dates?
Just for the public, maybe we would rattle some of the people that are watching.
April first is our public hearing, one and two.
We're starting the next two.
April first is also a regular council meeting.
And then we decide on.
May sixth is a regular council meeting, May eighth will be anticipated vote for F by twenty-six.
That was around five thirty.
And Sour will put them on the upcoming meetings.
And then forty-second, that's the second, you'll be buying thirty for that one, because that's gonna be the date that I open that, yeah. I think it's five thirty, it is already.
So next meeting, April first, we're having the budget meeting. Public hearing first.
Is that also, is, is the public hearing start at six?
We start at six to unlimited time, correct? And then we just start, our meeting is meeting at the end.
That's the, whether people probably watching out there, they can come, they can, any information, they can.
Is there anything that says we should do it the other way? People who only want to come to or.
Maybe first?
Yeah. I'm, I'm, I mean, as you just said, it's on, the public hearing has no end times.
Right, it's gonna be the only chance for the people to speak.
Those two meetings are.
So six and seven, yeah. I think the public, the public hearing was posted at six PM or immediately following the previous meeting. The council agenda will go out, I believe, you wanna put it out Wednesday afternoon, so.
So I'm, I'm good with the.
Council meeting first?
First.
Oh, okay.
I'm gonna be honest, it's funny, I, I, I expect, and, and it's unfortunate, I expect five to ten people.
Oh, I think we'll have more.
I hope so.
I do too, yeah.
I really do, I hope, I hope it's, you know, but I, I just hope that, you know, it's constructive too, not destructive. But again, again, what I said earlier, it's nothing personal, it's just, you know, I probably shouldn't get my mouth shut for a couple more meetings and then went from there. But I just threw it out there, just to start them off.
Any other comments? Hearing none, motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?